Well, good morning. We're here for our weekly board session and it is Wednesday, January 30th, 2019. And the month has just flown by. It is nine o'clock. We're here in the Senator hearing room. And if you will join us, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I gotta get you in the cadence.
Yeah, was that was off?
Yeah, you're a little quick. Yeah. And we don't score touchdowns that way. Okay, so we have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning. We have a presentation from our Santa Central group. We've got all these smiling faces here today. Welcome. Who's gonna lead us off?
Lisa.
Okay, Lisa and Stacy. Is it Mandy? Welcome.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm Lisa Miller. I'm the Volunteer Services Coordinator with Marion County at Business Services. And I'm also the co-chair of the Holiday Wishes Santa Central Committee. I'm here with my fellow co-chairs Stacy Ruhlman and Mandy Osberger, the President of Marion Polk Yamhill Foster Parent Association. And we are here this morning just to say thank you for the support of, from all of our employees in Marion County for making our Holiday Wishes Santa Central program such a success last year. And I just wanted to give a little background, out of respect for our new Commissioner, a little explanation of what Santa Central is. So the interesting part is that I did a little research and found out it started a little different than I had thought. We know it's been around for a very long time, about 25 years Marion County employees have been supporting our foster kids through the Foster Parent Association. I reached out to one of the original members who started the program and it actually started out of our juvenile district attorney's office. It was one of the staff members, they actually had an annual Christmas party and they did a Santa, a secret Santa exchange. And the staff decided they really wanted something more interesting, wanted to do something bigger. So they had partnered with a couple of other people who bought gifts for foster kids and decided, let's do this for our staff party. And that is how our Holiday Wishes Santa Central program started. And it continued to grow. The juvenile department, they housed it for quite a while. When the individual who started the program, Rosemary Scott, she retired. She took the program to her house and actually did it out of her garage for a couple of years until the sheriff's office, a couple of people from parole and probation took over. So then it was housed in the sheriff's office. It continued to grow. The employees very supportive of the program, get excited about it every year. So now that it has kinda grown to all of our departments, employees participating, now it's housed under our Business Services Department and our committee every year gets together and tries to come up with some creative ways of how we can support our foster kids. So I'm gonna turn it over to Stacy now, so she's gonna give you a little update of what we did last year with our Holiday Wishes program.
Well, thank you, Lisa. Good morning Commissioners. I am Stacy Ruhlman with Marion County Business Services. And I am here today on behalf of the Santa Central Committee. I always enjoy this opportunity to get to come and just praise the generosity of county employees because every year it never fails to amaze me how they just turn up for this program. They turn up and they show up and they do good things to help kids in our community that really need it, right? That are kind of this forgotten group of kids. So I love getting to come and talk about that. And this year we also had some really good community partners that allowed it to make our best year ever. In a recap with Mandy last year, after the previous year's program, we asked her what else we could do to help. We'd been raising some extra money and we wanted to do something different. And she had indicated that one thing that would really help foster families was to get some hygiene items and diapers in various sizes. Many foster families have lots of, a lot of children, so buying the more expensive like hygiene items that most of our teenagers especially enjoy is really difficult for these families because they've got four, three, five, 10 kids that they're supporting. And we all know teenage boys love Axe Body Spray, so we wanted to help them get that. And so in addition to the 206 gifts purchased, 206 gifts purchased for the foster kids, we collected tons and tons and tons, we filled almost a whole cube with hygiene items that county employees donated so that these kids could get to pick, right? The nice stuff, the stuff that the family might not necessarily always be able to go and buy for them. And in addition to that, we collected a slew of diapers. We were able to fill the back of Lisa's SUV with just diapers and hygiene items, not including the county van we filled with toys. And so that was really, really cool to get to do that. Also, because this year we had a couple of really generous anonymous donors, we had some really successful auctions. Public Works received an Xbox anonymously to auction off or do a raffle for. And then with that and then a silent auction that they did, they raised, just Public Works alone raised $1,600. Outside of many of the other things, Business Services and the Clerk's Office raised almost $600 between an Instapot and a TV that were donated. So we raised as a county, above and beyond the hygiene items, the diapers, the gifts purchased for 63 families, $3,300 outside of that. And it's really cool and it allowed us to do something we've never been able to do before, which was really awesome. In partnership with some generous discounts from Northern Lights Theater and Donatello's Pizza, we were able to purchase a night out for every, for all of the 63 foster families. So each family received an envelope that had movie tickets for all the kids, Donatello's Pizza gift card for $25, and then a Dairy Queen gift card so that the family could go out, have time together. We've never been able to do that and it was really neat to be able to do just something extra for these families that give back so generously by taking foster kids in. It's such a special calling and so to be able to help them in that way was really neat this year. So aside from thanking county employees for their generosity, there are some very special Business Services staff that helped Lisa and I stay above board. And I want to make sure that I thank them. Brenda Phillips, Mary Batcher, Tracy Fisk, Jennifer Lang, Sarah Cooteley, and Kathy Carter help us buy gifts, they help us load vans, they help us do whatever it is we need them to do so that Lisa and I don't go completely crazy every year when we're trying to get this all under, all under control and still do our regular jobs. So I'm really grateful to them for that. And then the department reps, the folks out in the departments that year after year help us raise money, they collect money, they do fundraisers. Year after year, they help us keep things in line and collect gifts from everybody. And then of course, as a committee, we're so thankful to the Board of Commissioners for your continued support of this program. We really are grateful that you allow us to continue to support this cause. So as we recap Santa Central from 2018, I'm so proud to be able to serve Marion County with such kind and generous staff. People who raised well over $10,000 to support foster kids and families in our community. It doesn't matter if they purchased a gift or bought, deserted a Thanksgiving auction or boots from the Public Works fundraiser, they picked up Axe Body Spray for those teenage boys, or bought an Xbox raffle ticket. They all came together and showed up for foster kids in our community and I am so grateful to get to work with such a generous group of people. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Mandy with the Marion Polk Yamhill Foster Parent Association. And she's gonna talk a little bit specifically about how this impact had a, how this program had an impact on local kids.
Great. Good morning.
Welcome, Mandy.
As Stacy said, my name is Mandy Augsberger. I have the pleasure of being the President of the Marion Polk Yamhill Foster Parent Association for about three to four years now. This year with your assistance and generosity, we were able to serve, at my last count, 201 children, but I believe we had some come in late requests, so I believe it was 206 children and teens in our community. And each one received a gift or gift card, handmade beanie hats, gloves, personal care items, and pajamas. And then each family received their family night out. It truly was the best year yet that we've been able to give these foster families. Caring full-time for children from hard places can be exhausting. And we find that the children's behaviors really escalate during the holidays, especially from Thanksgiving to Christmas, without even knowing why these children begin to struggle with loss and separation, with unhappy memories and with grief. And our foster parents are doing difficult and therapeutic work with these children in their homes as well as working full-time. And then most of them, majority of our foster parents have biological children of their own in the home. I hear on a really regular basis that foster parents struggle because they don't feel supported. Foster parenting can be extremely lonely. People in the community do not realize what you're going through as a foster parent and what you're giving to emotionally traumatized children. When the holidays come around, it's like a light switch going off that all changes. Our foster parents all shared how incredibly thankful they were and how supported they felt by our community. All of them acknowledged that it just felt during that time of year like the community was behind them. Danica is a single foster mom with between five to seven elementary-aged girls in her home. She's a single foster mom with five to seven elementary-aged girls in her home, which is amazing if you know the girls. She said, "My girls were overjoyed to get gifts that they asked for. Thank you for being a part of making these girls' lives a little bit brighter. We all appreciate the generosity and love we felt this season." And then Joanna is a married foster mom who shared Holiday Wishes was such a big blessing. We generally have five to nine children in our home and that makes Christmas a rather large expense. Holiday Wishes makes a big impact when you consider jammies, hats, gloves, scarves, gifts for each child. It helps so much. And this year we had seven kiddos that benefited from Holiday Wishes. I can't thank the Foster Parent Association and all of the donors enough for the blessings it brought to our home. The kids loved all the gifts and we're very thankful. I'd also like to share that in my own home, we serve 15 teenage boys at a time. All of them have behavioral issues far above what a regular foster placement can provide. The impact of Holiday Wishes has been amazing in my home. One of the boys this year just leaned up against the wall while we were opening gifts and there were tears in his eyes. He is normally a very exuberant, outgoing, gregarious child and he was just silent. There were no words for him. He was thankful for each and every gift and he just could not believe that there were people in the community that cared about each of them enough to buy them a gift. And he stated that many times to me. I can't believe that these people don't know us and they wanted to get us something. One of my boys experienced the death of his mother and his father is out of the picture. I have three boys whose mothers are incarcerated and the thought of Christmas with no family, no traditions, no gifts was overwhelming for them. When we filled out the Holiday Wishes forms, the boys didn't even want to say what they wanted because they thought they wouldn't really get it anyway and that would just be additionally disappointing to them. I assured them that the people in our community wanted to help them have a wonderful holiday and so they dreamed big and they thought of exactly what they wanted. They were blown away when the donors went out of their way to find exactly the specific items that they asked for, sometimes the exact color, the exact length of the sleeve they asked for. It was just amazing. I had many of the boys tell me that this was the best Christmas ever and part of that was the impact of the community supporting us. You just can't beat the smiles on their faces. It's truly amazing. The foster parents were so grateful for the extra personal care items, but to be honest, the family night out was just amazing. The tickets to the movies, the gift cards for pizza and ice cream just blew the families away. The response was dropped jaws. They could not believe that the community had gone above and beyond in that way. One of the families actually said, "We're going out tonight. That's it. We feel so spoiled. This just doesn't happen." And I just feel like there's really no way that we can appropriately thank Marion County for stepping up and just supporting the foster families who are doing the hard work of caring for these kids from hard places. Your community partnerships truly do make us stronger. Thank you.
Lisa, did you want to say anything?
Just one final thought. Connecting with Rosemary, she sent a little message and I just wanted to share that with you. She said she was so proud and appreciative of the people who participated back then and now. She says, "I may not have all the statistics in my head, but the memories are still there. Thank you for continuing this program. I hope you feel as rewarded as I did." And you make me cry every year.
Well, I'm definitely holding it back too. It's great to know that our community can do that, but I was just thinking of the kids as you were, as you were sharing that, you know, that they couldn't even dream because they couldn't even imagine that somebody would want to do that for them. And it's really, it's really nice that we're able to do that. I said, I'm wondering, was there any of those family night out vouchers that was missing some pizza?
What are you saying?
I heard pizza and I thought, well, you know.
We had a problem, sir.
Stacy, Stacy, do you share this program with our new hires as they come on board?
I do not.
Okay.
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm, I'm very impressed. I, obviously I'm the new guy here, so I appreciate you guys coming and telling me about this. But this sounds like a lift of the whole staff here in Marion County and it sounds like something that you guys have built over the years and is really a credit to the employees here. So I'm, I, yeah, you know, I really believe we're all in this together, you know? And, and you're proving it. You're proving it with this project and I just, I, I'm, yeah, it's amazing to me. How do you decide the number of families, the number of gifts? Because we have more than 200 foster kids here in Marion County. How does that work?
I can speak to that. Yes, in, in Marion County, the last count, we had approximately 800 children in foster care. Through our association, the families that are selected are actually paid members of our association. And generally, we get scholarships for those families if they can't afford the membership. It's an extremely low cost, $25 for the year, and there are just benefits upon benefits to being a paid member. So the families that choose not to be a paid member are not selected for the program.
Got it.
Okay. I don't have a lot to ask, just thanks everybody that's involved. Thanks for coming and telling us about it. But you, Mandy, it sounds like special credit for the extra you do when you describe those 15. I can just imagine, so thank you.
Absolutely, but the Axe Body Spray is a lot for 15, I was gonna say.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to another year. I'm sure we're already working on it. Consent to calendars next on our agenda, Commissioner.
Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. Included in it or on it is Community Services, approve an order reappointing Carla Muntz to Marion County Children and Families Commission with a term ending January 31st, 2023. Approve an order reappointing Tamara Getch, Karen Hilficker, Lindsay Ober, and appointing Ann Jorgensen and John Routen as dog control officers and rescind all prior orders appointing dog control officers. Health and Human Services approve Amendment 14 with the Oregon Health Authority to add $10,335 in funding and revise program element PH modernization. And the last tax office approve an order for property tax refund in the amount of $36,923.55 to Pacific Realty Associates LP.
Second the motion? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just, I think it's amazing that now Tamra is, is an official dog control officer.
Wait a minute, weren't you gonna do that?
I should be. I'm the official.
Yeah, everything else.
Dog dummy.
But didn't you go on a dog, is that coming up?
I'm com, dog ride, I'm going, I think that's coming up.
So now I want pictures of both of you with your nets when you're out there getting them.
It's on the fourth, so, so, yeah, after that, maybe I can get appointed as a animal control or dog control officer.
Just count on it.
Tamra is, and I guess, is.
Better have her come over.
Yeah, can you come over? Is that because of your position that you need to be officially appointed as a dog control officer? You may have to go out and.
Yes, Commissioners. According to code, those, we have dog officers that are appointed by the Board as well as the management for the shelter. So the individuals outside of being current dog control officers, John Routen, Ann Jorgensen, and myself are part of the management team. And each time we have a change in our management, we issue a new order so that we have the most present or most current management on record. And this allows us to do the duties of a dog control officer such as issuing a citation, et cetera, in the absence of a control officer on site or in the community.
So there's some training that those people have to go through to, to be certified?
Corrected.
I probably wouldn't pass.
No, that's another issue.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Our next item is under Action. Business Services, consider approval of an order appointing Carrie Klosterman, Mary Beth Allen, and Brandy Leos to the Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending December 31st, 2019. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Today I have with me Brandy Leos, who is a former employee of Marion County who now works for the City of Tigard, and Mary Beth Allen, who's a former colleague of mine at Multnomah County, and she's now working for the Oregon State Police. They have volunteered to be Board members of our County Compensation Board. So Commissioner Willis, I'll give you a little background.
Thank you.
So our Comp Board, every year by state statute, we are annually have to have the committee, three to five volunteers to help us decide on the compensation of elected officers and elected officials. So there's a, the Board decides on the compensation for normal employee staff, but for elected officials, this Comp Board helps make those decisions. So we have rules and protocols that we follow. Mary Beth and Brandy will help us ascertain all the data. Erin, my right arm over there, Erin Carney Bell, is the one who helps get all the data, fill out all the sheets, does some analysis, and we hand it to the three people who have had backgrounds in compensation, that's what's required of them, they've had backgrounds in compensation previously. They both, these two, and Carrie Klosterman, I'm sorry, is not here today, couldn't be here today, and she also has compensation background. So we have them look at our data, have them ask more questions. If we need to go back to our comparables, we have four comparables, just like we do for our normal employee compensation. We look at that to see where there might be variables or differences and so they make recommendations or they may ask more questions to help validate that information. So today Brandy and Mary Beth are here. If they'd like to say something, give them time to do that. Brandy?
Didn't plan for that. So I'm, I'm honored to be part of this Board. When I worked here at Marion County, I served in Erin's role, supporting this Board. And so I'm rather familiar with the process and, and how it works. I've done similar work for other counties throughout the state in a consulting role. So I'm very honored to be here and be able to volunteer for my county with some expertise that I have now, so, thank you.
Oh, hi, I'm Mary Beth and I have a long career in public sector, human resources and labor relations, so was just really thrilled to be able to contribute to Marion County. It's been really great to work here over the past couple of years and I have lived here in the past. And as a matter of fact, I'm actually a descendant of some of the original settlers of Salem. On my mom's side, they had a land grant in the community. They were actually the Croweisen family, as in Croweisen Creek. So it's kind of a sentimental thing to be able to contribute. Also, you've obviously got a great staff. As Colleen mentioned, we got to work together at Multnomah County and Jane and I actually went to law school together. So I can just say you've got a fantastic staff here and I can tell that from the people I've met here and, and worked with. So it's just really an honor to be a part of this committee, so thank you.
And I failed to mention Lisa Miller, who you heard this morning. That just brings us all to tears most of the time. So those two really help keep this on a level playing field, so.
Great. Any questions about?
You mentioned comparables. What are our comparable categories?
Our comparables are Jackson Lane, Schutz, and Clackamas. And occasionally we have to go outside to our competitors who are the city of Salem and state, although there's not a lot of correlating positions in, in those two areas, but occasionally you might find something. But really, it's those four that are, are comparables.
Thank you. Thank you for being willing to serve. Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate your service, your background and, and being able to do that for us. Thing, we're good?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve an order appointing Carrie Klosterman, Mary Beth Allen, and Brandy Leos to the Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending December 31st, 2019.
I'll second it and I also want to thank them for being willing to help us.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here today. Next item is under Community Services. Consider an order approving the distribution of video lottery receipts to the amount of $8,500 for 2018-19 revitalization downtown state and community project grant application and funding recommendation. And Tamra's back with us, the dog catcher.
New title. All right, well, thank you Commissioners. Yes, before you today is a request for approval for a grant that we've received for our community project grants program. This particular program is open to all cities, but we really do have a primary focus on our rural communities and really trying to help them with their economic development efforts. This grant helps us distribute resources in the community for economic development purposes and in this particular case would be going to the area of Staton for revitalizing their downtown area. As you mentioned, the grant request is for $8,500. And typically, when our department receives requests, these can be found through partnerships that they are working perhaps maybe with a state organization, maybe they have come into contact with one of our staff members, perhaps they've seen the application or information on our website and they submit a request to our office. So this is available to anyone in nonprofit, a city government, or a business organization in the rural communities to promote and provide economic developments in their local communities. Staff has received and reviewed this grant application and it does meet the minimum requirements for this particular program area. This grant is really exciting. I visit Staton often and its downtown core is just charming. However, what I, I find really exciting is that this community has taken an opportunity to look at its downtown core and begin thinking about where it wants to go in the future. The city of Staton has taken a look at this, they've prioritized the revitalization of their downtown core. And having a facade and working with the, a facade that's universal, has a theme, helping them to bring people into the downtown core community of Staton is a vision that not only the city of Salem, excuse me, city of Staton, as well as this old, the revitalization of downtown Staton community has in their mind, but also the business members. And we as community visitors as well as community residents will be able to come to this downtown community once the facade has been totally completed and enjoy those businesses that are being placed in that community. This grant pays for a architect, an architect that will help in the design of the revitalization as well as helping to offset costs on a Maricor member who would help in communications with the business owners, working with the project development, and just making sure that they're able to enhance and enhance efforts in the local area as well as comply with grant requirements. Lastly, I'd just like to mention that this grant is seen as a launch grant for this community. We know that $8,500 is not a lot of money. However, they're seeing this as a way to help develop the vision through an architect to be able to not only show its community members what they see and bring unity around that vision, but to also share that with other grant sources such as Main Street could be. Street could be another with other organizations, and I'm not suggesting that this is happening, but for example, Business Oregon or other foundations that may have an interest in downtown core development. So this grant is submitted to you for consideration. This is a board order which would authorize me to enter into a contract with Staton for this revitalization project.
Okay, questions?
Well, maybe just some comments. This is, as Tammy said, something's been ongoing for a long time, trying to develop downtown in Staton. I remember being in the chamber like thirty years ago. It was the issue. There's been projects, and they try. It was kind of bypassed by the main road decades ago, but it is a lovely spot and has a lot of potential. Now, I hadn't thought of it, but I will. It's a, Jayden, listen up, potential conflict in that my wife rents a shop space down there. So if it, I can't make the connection. I just want to mention it's a potential. But otherwise, I'm all for it and have been for decades.
Yeah, you know, Tamara, as we're talking about this, as you're presenting this, it reminds me of the other projects that we've done. For example, Mill City, we did, we actually did a grant for their facade improvements where they did a matching grant. Mount Angel, the facade improvements, that was like four years ago, I think.
About four.
And then we did it again for them because they did such a great job with it. And Commissioner and I got to tour over there this week on the housing projects and saw some of the nice improvements that they made. And then we did a grant, just some that came to mind. We did one with the city of Donald to help them with their planning process for the urban growth boundary expansion. And so really good things that are happening. And there's, these are all examples of how the county is supporting our rural communities to make them great places to live, work, and play. And I think we're really fortunate to have good partners in all of our twenty cities throughout Marion County. So it's great to have you bring this to us today. And it is a little bit of money, but it really makes a community.
Leverages.
Yeah, it does. Great.
And just for our audience, viewing audience information, each year in our lottery grant budget, we submit an allocation for these types of grants. So each year, there's approximately sixty thousand dollars. Some years, we use all of that money because we've had qualifying requests that come in. And then there's other years that that doesn't get totally allocated. However, each year, we're committed to supporting economic development in our rural communities, and that is in our budget year after year.
Great.
Well, I just want to say that I very much support this project and support the work that the Revitalized Downtown Staton Community Project is doing. I've met with them. I really like them a lot. I think they really have a clear direction, and they're doing great things for the city of Staton. I happen to live a block from where this is. So I also, I don't have a conflict, but I just don't want there to be any appearance that I'm, you know, using tax dollars or lottery dollars to fix up my neighborhood. So I think I'm going to abstain from this vote, but it's not because I don't approve of this or support it. I strongly support this project.
All right, so Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we do approve an order for distribution of video lottery seats, an amount of eighty-five-hundred dollars for the Revitalized Downtown Staton Community Project grant application and funding recommendation.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion passes.
One abstention.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, note the one abstention. You got to note that. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, Tamara. Our next item is under Public Works. Consider an approval of intergovernmental agreement for the 2019 emulsified, emulsified asphalt slurry seal surfacing project in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars through December 31st, 19. Brian, welcome. And I don't want to say that again. Emulsified asphalt.
Yes, so you have on the agenda this morning for consideration, three intergovernmental agreements. Those are between Marion County and the cities of Salem, Staton, and Turner. As you know, for the last three years, we've been running a pilot program under our slurry seal program. And in that pilot program, we have invited a small number of local cities to participate in the county's slurry seal contract. And we've used that pilot program to work out some kinks. And I figured I'd give you an update on the program overall, and then answer any questions you have about the proposed intergovernmental agreement. So our slurry seal program, so if you see a vehicle like this trembling down the road, you know that you're looking at a slurry seal truck. It's not an asphalt paver. It's not a chip seal truck. It is a single unit vehicle that has two tanks on it. One is an aggregate tank. The other one is an emulsified asphalt tank. And it gets mixed in this vehicle and laid out in a thin layer on the road. Slurry seal as a pavement, as a resurfacing technology, is just about our most economical way of resurfacing a county road. And it's one of those technologies, you know, everything, we have a mix of different treatments that we use on the roadways because each one has different characteristics in terms of durability, what it does, what it may or may not do structurally for the pavement section, and then overall cost. So slurry seal is great for us because it is one, it is probably our least cost resurfacing treatment for county roads. But you can see from this picture, it goes down as a very thin layer, and it's a mix of fine aggregate and emulsified asphalt. So that thin layer is not as durable, say, as a big, thick, two or three inches of new asphalt. So we tend to use this on our residential streets and lower volume roads. Does a couple of really good things. One thing is it does resurface the street. So once it's all done, you do have a new surface, so fills in pox and popouts and roughness that's in the surface of the road. But probably the most important thing it does is it seals out water, because water getting underneath your roadway softens things up, and then vehicles cross over it, and that leads to premature failure of your pavement. So it's one of our three big surface treatment types that we use on our roadways. Here's a little snapshot of our last five years, plus our proposed program in terms of square yardage. So, you know, I've included here the three years immediately prior to starting our pilot program, and then the last two seasons. And you can see, before we started inviting the cities to participate, I'll use my, the cursor as a pointer, you know, much smaller program in terms of square yardage, slightly higher unit prices, and you'll see, you know, this is sort of a sign of the economic recovery in the construction industry. Prices kind of started to creep up, you know, year after year. And once we invited some city participation in our first pilot year, our program more than doubled in size. We, you know, we, on average, started to see about a twelve percent savings on our unit pricing. And, you know, so really what it did is it took us back to this 2014 timeframe in terms of economics. Now, we've informally heard from a couple of the cities that have participated in the program that for them, they see a much larger unit price decrease, because they're talking much smaller programs. If we're in the eighty thousand square yard range, they're looking at programs that are like twelve to twenty thousand, maybe about a quarter or a fifth our size. And they're seeing anecdotically that by going with a larger program, joining into a larger program that has a larger economy of scale, they think they're seeing savings on the twenty to forty percent side in terms of cost. And then this gives you a snapshot of what collectively this group of cities in the county are looking to do this coming season. So we haven't bid it yet, obviously, so we don't have the unit price, but it gives you an idea of how our program compares. And it's interesting, as you look at the data, that, you know, we had an immediate jump, and then even grew from there, almost three hundred thousand square yards last year. And we seem to have crossed a threshold where we've, the package is now large enough that we're attracting a larger group of contractors. And some larger contractors are starting to give us bids. And so that larger pool of contractors is just achieving more competition, more stable unit pricing, more consistent unit pricing, which is helpful for us when it comes to planning out our program. So this year, we are still in that pilot program mode. We still only have a handful of cities that are participating. The goal is, once we get through this season, and we have one more round of, well, what do we need to do to sort of fine tune our program? And we have the engineering resources in-house to manage a larger program. The plan is to make this, you know, to invite more cities to participate in the program. So here's what you'll see in the IGAs. This gives you a snapshot of our program. Here's a map showing, like I said, we usually do our slurry seal program in residential areas. So this is an area of northeast Salem, outside the incorporated city. So this is county territory. And so we're going to focus on this area of northeast Salem for this summer. And then we also are going to treat Spons Landing County Park. That's a county, that's a parks project that's joining into this contract as well. So that's what we'll be doing in our, in our summer program. Here's where the city of Staton is looking to achieve. So they've targeted neighborhood immediately north of Shaft Road. So just like us, they're focusing on areas of town where they can get some efficiency by keeping the footprint tight. And I think their plan in the future years is to, you know, kind of move throughout the city in this, focusing on an area-by-area basis. They're looking to do about twenty thousand square yards in their program. And then city of Turner, being much smaller, they have a pretty modest program. But Third Street and Denver Street are two of their highest volume roads. Now, city of Salem is actually finalizing their list. I don't have a map of where they're focusing, but their program is targeting about eighty thousand square yards. So their program actually is larger than the county's program this year. So they'll be the largest participant in this, in this four-way contract. All right. So, you know, like I said, it's been, it's been a pilot program up till now, including this year. And so here's a little rundown of some of the benefits that we've seen from this. Like I said, we're seeing more bid competition, which has resulted in reduced unit prices overall. Definitely has increased access for the cities. That probably is the shining star for this program, is cities or some of our local cities are doing slurry seal work that would not have done it otherwise. So they're gaining access to some city maintenance through a contractor that they didn't have access to before. And that higher volume production, not only does it, are we seeing lower unit prices, but we're seeing contractors that, now the volume is there, that they're bringing in larger equipment. And with that larger equipment, there's more capabilities. One of the big ones is the larger slurry seal units, they have a Portland cement additive, so they can actually mix dry Portland cement, powdered cement, into the slurry as it's laid down on the road. And the great thing about that is it takes about six to eight hours for slurry seal to cure. Put Portland cement in there. The reason why it takes that long is it's a slurry. It's a mixture of water and oil. So the curing happens when the water evaporates. Portland cement is great at sucking up water. So you add a little bit of Portland cement, it sucks up that water immediately, and you can drive on it in a matter of an hour and a half or two hours. So greatly cuts down on the amount of, the duration of impact in the cities. And just the duration of impact overall, with a larger contractor, bigger equipment, they're moving much faster. So we're in and out of neighborhoods much quicker. Like I said, with some of the techniques that they bring to the table, that impact to that neighborhood goes from a full day impact to maybe, with traffic control set up and take down, maybe two, three, four hours or so.
So Brian, question maybe? Well, I'll wait till you're done.
Yeah. Well, I was going to go through, what are the trade-offs? And that's, and that's the end of the presentation. So the trade-offs are, this is definitely a more complex contract. So when we partner with the cities, they need to have their plan worked out, and give us maps, or at least a list of roads that they want to do. And then we have a little more administrative time associated with getting that contract together. When we tend to attract larger contractors, at least in the slurry seal realm, those can tend to be out-of-area contractors. And so responsiveness, we've discovered that that's been an issue. When you have somebody local and their punch list items, maintenance items, or warranty items they need to come back and address, obviously much easier for a local contractor to get out and touch those things up. For larger contractor, we're calling them in from out of town. So sometimes we have to get a body of punch list items, and then get them back in town and take care of a larger group. So people aren't necessarily seeing a quick response when it comes to fixing those items. There's a change in contract risk, we think is pretty manageable. But we are, this is a county contract, and we do work, the IGA has authorized us to do work on the city's streets. So let's say something freak happens, and somebody crashes into the piece of equipment, driver or something like that, and for one reason or another, that contractor's liability insurance chooses to file some sort of grievance. Well, it's our, it's our contract. So we are dealing with that under our contract. The cities are one step removed from that. So, you know, you think about the scenarios where contract risk comes in, and, you know, we're pretty well secure with insurance on these contracts. I mean, we require the contractors to carry reasonable insurance. So that helps mitigate the risk. But there is, there is an element there that we have to think about. Probably the biggest trade-off here is, you know, we use a single contract. So it forces all these city jurisdictions to be satisfied with sort of a one-size-fits-all contract. One city may want a different notification program or timeline to residents. Well, we have to get everybody under one umbrella with, using one process. And so it is a little bit of a trade-off. It's not quite as flexible or nimble as a city could do on their own. But by and large, the feedback we've gotten has been really positive because of the reduced cost and the access. So that's an update on the pilot program itself, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that with the IGAs.
Yes. Oh, go ahead, Sam.
Well, I just had two thoughts as you were going through it, Brian. One on the city thing is, and Jane, maybe again, is there some hold harmless for the situations you described could be included in the agreement with the cities to give one more layer of support before we'd have to pay?
Commissioner Brentano, on paragraph eight, these contracts are reviewed by legal. There is a hold harmless, so.
Fine. All right, I took that. The other concern I might have was being one contractor, looks like, say, time's getting short in the summer. There could be a scheduling priority problem. That doesn't necessarily mean our projects get done first. I'm still fine with it. I just want to make sure everybody knows that that could happen.
And that is a trade-off. The nice thing is, with the larger package, we tend to float to the higher end of that priority list. When the contractor's looking at their backlog for the summer, our package is larger. They do tend to stick closer to their schedule than when we had a smaller package. So.
And that wouldn't leave Turner or Staton holding, because they'd finish up the projects they have in the area, then move on to others.
Right. We have language in the contract that requires them to mobilize and stay mobilized with us until they're done.
So my question was in the, in the funding billing section, section four, it says county labor and services should not exceed five thousand dollars. This is the city of Salem's IGA I'm looking at. So is that, because you're spending time, you're doing all this work, is that, when it says not to exceed, how are, how are you billing the cities for our services?
They pay our actual staff time associated with managing, assembling the contract and managing it. Now, city of Salem is a unique among our partner cities.
We know that, that they're unique.
In this instance, the uniqueness is they have staff trained in slurry seal inspection. So they have certified inspectors. So what we tend to do is administer the contract, and we, they put, they have inspectors on the ground that are in advance of and following the contractor, making sure the prep is ready, and making sure the contractor's cleaning, and wrapping up everything on a site before they move to the next site. So we have, we provide less labor support for the city of Salem. You'll see similar dollar amounts in the other city agreements, and they have much smaller programs. That's because we actually do their inspection.
So Staton is five thousand, but their program's only forty-five.
Right. And based on our track record the last two years, that's adequate to cover our costs, the county's costs in administering that contract for the city. So they pay the actual cost.
Any other questions?
Just butt in there. So that implies a savings to the city, too, that they don't have to provide staff to do this kind of thing. So it's a little more of a service even than described, at least to me.
My question, Brian, was, and it kind of got answered. So we're not doing any of the work we contracted out?
That's correct.
Do we do paving work internally?
We do, yeah. We have.
What programs are those? How does, how do those work?
We have established, trained paving crew. They, we tend to do paving work in batches. So that crew kind of disbands, goes and works in their districts, and then we pull them together when it's time to do paving. So we usually do paving in batches. Usually there's a spring push, and then we get into our chip seal program. And then, once the chip And then, once the chip seal program starts to taper down, we have a big push in the fall. Most of that is maintenance type repair work, patching, so we don't typically get the paver or, really, we have a latent box, which is not a full capability paver. Doesn't have the kind of controls that a, that a commercial paver would have. But we get that on the road. And we may do long patches for efficiency, but really, they're still just patches. So when we want to repave an entire road or street.
We contract it out.
Yep.
Yeah, and we have a chip sealer. We should go do a right line.
You've done that, are you driven it yourself?
And I've, well, no, not exactly. They asked me if I wanted to, but that's a really complicated machine, those people are pretty talented that run that machine.
Yep.
And then we have a striper, yeah, we stripe for a whole bunch of different people. We stripe over to Tillamook.
Yep.
And we do a lot of contracting with other, other places with our equipment, so.
Yep.
And yes, it's crooked somewhere up.
I didn't say anything, did I?
Somewhere up in North Marion County is a crooked stripe that I laid down. Actually, it was pretty darn straight, I was pretty proud of it. So any other questions? Seeing none, we'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreements for the 2019 emulsified asphalt slurry seal surfacing project in the amount of $215,000 through December 31st, 2019.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Been a busy guy. Or spring's coming. Been a bit busier.
That's right, your contracts in place.
Okay, so that concludes our action items, and if you want to read the calendar, Commissioner?
Today is January 30th, and at 6 o'clock this evening, we have a City of Salem work session on the Salem River Crossing located in the City Council Chambers, room 220 at 555 Liberty Street Southeast in Salem. Tomorrow is Thursday, January 21st, at 9 o'clock in the morning, we have a work session that is an orientation to Marion County Health and Human Services located in the Silverton Conference Room, the fifth floor of this building. On February 4th, at 8:30 in the morning, we have calendar review located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. At 9 o'clock, we have management update, again on February 4th, in Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor of this building. On February 5th, we have a work session on the economic development budget located on the fifth floor of this building, in the Silverton Conference Room. On February 5th, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we have a semi-annual service district meeting located in Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On February 6th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have board session located here in this room. On February 6th, at noon, we have the Woodburn Marion County meeting at Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. And on February 6th, at 5:30 in the evening, we have the Marion County Fair Board meeting in the Commissioner's Boardroom, the fifth floor of this building.
Well, that seemed like a quick read today, compared.
I'm sure it'll fill up, huh?
It does.
As it usually does.
Well, we took a, Commissioner Wilson and I took a really interesting tour.
Yeah, we did.
On Monday, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Monday, we toured most of our housing projects. We didn't do Staton sublimity. We're going to do that later, but I think we, I'm not going to speak for you, but I know, I think we were both really impressed with the condition that they were in.
Absolutely. It's not what you think of when you think of a housing project. They were really nice.
Right. They were really good shape, and as a matter of fact, they were, they were talking about what their capital plans are, you know, to, to put a new roof on. I think it was Jefferson needed a new roof and maybe potential siding and stuff, but there wasn't one that I walked into that I said, you know, I couldn't live in it, right?
That's right.
I mean, it was, it was really nice. As a matter of fact, they had some that I could actually qualify for.
Well, and I, you know, my wife.
Senior living.
We lived in a little apartment in West Salem, you know, a few years ago, and some of those apartments were nicer than the places, the place we lived in.
Right. Right, well, and, you know, I think it's the, we do have, that they have to operate under certain standards, and they've, they've done a pretty good job keeping them up.
Well, and especially for our seniors, it's nice that we have decent, safe housing.
What was, what was the lady's name that let us know right away?
Was it Kathy?
I think it was Kathy.
Kathy, yeah, yeah, she was very happy.
So she was at Mount Angel, Sam, in the Glockenspiel.
Yes.
And we got off the elevator and she was pushing a cart down and she stopped right away and said, are you inspectors or whatever? I can't remember.
You're, you're wearing suits.
Yeah. You're wearing suits. And then, of course, we told her who, who we were, and she goes, well, you know, and, we vote in here, I make sure everybody votes. She let us know right away.
I hope she was happy with the situation.
I think she was, yeah, yeah.
That's been one. You might just go over with an interesting meeting yesterday, and it's related in the possibility of what we can do, housing. Why don't you take a minute and, because that really wasn't a public meeting in terms of a broadcast situation.
Yeah, what did you think? I, I felt like we learned a lot.
Well, I'll tell you, when I first, when we had a work session two, three weeks ago, I thought, well, what are you asking that we're not doing? But through the course of that meeting, listening to different things, I had lots of different ideas on things that we could do to, what I didn't say and probably wish I would have is, is kind of make a sale. When you want to move something, you create incentives, it's like a sale, so what can we do that makes people respond? And there were ideas coming up. I'm not, as I say, I'm not, I mean, they're just dreaming ideas, you could lower fees and try to expedite something, so it's not to the point of making a promise, but it just that, that those are the kind of things we or others can look at.
It's, I, I, it seemed like everybody who was there was really engaged in the issue.
Yeah.
Which was, I thought that was cool.
That was key.
To see, to see people really excited about getting to work on it, and it's complicated, you know, I think it is an issue that people know we, we need more housing and we need good housing, and, and people are looking for that. But, you know, as, as I know you would agree on this, we're, you want to be hesitant when it comes to just going in and, and messing with the market, you know? And you don't, you don't want to do that quickly, you don't, you don't want to be ham-handed about it, you know, you really want to make sure you're tailoring it right so that, so that you keep people working and building and, and you don't have the government kind of breaking things, you know? Some, I, I feel like to a certain extent, we're sort of like doctors, first do no harm, you know?
We're from the government, we're here to help.
Must have one commercially just certified, yeah, it'll be fine, I'm scared too. There was one other aspect of the, and I think it's our viewpoint, I did sign one of those wrong, you don't have to make note of it.
I, I did, I already made note, I scared you down.
The point, the point was that we're, certainly the homeless issue is, is a part of it, but that isn't what the whole looks about, home, homes, period.
More homes, it helps everybody.
Well, I consider myself sort of a unapologetic advocate for the middle class, you know, and a lot of times, they're not included in the, in the homeless discussion, because a lot of times folks in the middle class have a home, but it doesn't mean they're not getting squished, or that they're not getting forced out of their homes, or their, their prices aren't going up, or, you know? And, and a lot of, you know, I think the median income here in Marion County is $50,000, so, so I think we have to look and make sure that for our families who are making that kind of money, that, that everything's, that, to the extent we can make things work for them, the system's working for them. Now, obviously, there's a limit to what we can achieve and what we can accomplish, but it seemed like people were excited about the issue anyway.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the, the biggest takeaway, and there's a lot of good ideas that came out of it, but the biggest takeaway was the, the interaction from all the departments understanding, hey, they've got this, they've got that, we need this, and, and I, I think you saw a synergy there, and as John, who's, he's probably not watching us over on his vacation.
I'm sure he cares a lot.
I know. But as John would say, the enterprise approach was taking place in that room, right? I mean, it wasn't siloed departments, and they've all got their own issues, but I think that we've got a team that's willing to work together and come up with solutions to, to help each other, and the, the whole thing is, is, you know, the more housing units you can put in at any level or any, any degree, but especially where people can afford, afford them, because we're not going to, you know, and we're not going to subsidize our way out of this issue, there's no way you can afford to do that. So the market-driven approach is, you know, supply and demand, so the more we can get units out there, the better it's going to be for everybody. It's a long-term deal. It's not something you can snap your fingers at tomorrow and, and happen, but there may be some low-hanging fruit that we'll find. We heard some of it yesterday, so.
Well, and I, I think if we, if we do it right, or if we, you know, in 10 years, things will be better. Doesn't mean we won't have a problem, but, but I think it is something that we can probably make some progress on. You know, and, and what, what do they say, politics is the art of what's possible, right? Government's the art of what's possible, so, you know, we may find that there's only so much that we can do and what's possible, but if we do a little bit and it makes our community better, it's worth doing, you know?
Those statistics were pretty interesting on the, the last 15 years of housing units per popular, per population, family units, and Tillamook was like 2.73 and.
I didn't understand what they were telling me there, looked just opposite of what I was.
I'd want to see the, I'd want to see the actual data.
Yeah, Lincoln City was 1.4, and that makes sense, because Lincoln City, if you think about it, it's a lot of second homes. So they don't have a lot, they don't have a lot of population growth, but they've got a lot of homes that have been.
But I have a place in Tillamook, and they're saying the same thing, that people have homes for, like me, fishing, and it takes it out of the.
Workforce.
Yeah, takes it away from workforce, be the kind of house that a working family would want, but I kind of still need it.
Right. Well, and that's, that's why those numbers were different, because when I, when I was looking at that map and I was going, okay, if we're at point 89, Portland was, I think, at point 76, so they've really, they're really behind. And for those people that are watching, the, the, basically, for every family unit that grows in population, you're supposed to have at least 1.1 new housing units, because that replaces old ones, et cetera, that's what the point one is. And in the last 15 years, Portland's at point, whatever I think it was, 76, so that's why they're having this housing crisis, and we're right behind them, because we've only been, we've only been growing at point 89, according to this research that was done. And yet, the coast was higher, and that's because of those second homes. I didn't, Clamath Falls was the only rural county that I was looking at that, that had, like, I think Clamath Falls had 1.3 units built for each family, so I thought that was interesting. And then there may be some resorts down there that have driven that as well.
I don't know.
I don't know what the issues are, but.
I did want to reiterate what I said at the meeting, though, it was that I think homeownership is also really important, you know, I think you can, you can have a system where you build a lot of units, but if, if people aren't able to own their own home, I think create, it can create sort of other bad outcomes that you don't necessarily want. And I thought the other thing that, that Brandon said that was important was, you know, it needs to be a community effort, so I do think we're going to have to work on talking to people and hearing what they want in their communities to make sure that we're all in it together and we're all pushing the same direction.
Yeah, the politics of it.
Yeah.
Let's see, I'm going to Dave's Killer Bread today, Governor's Reentry Council, we're going to see where we're at after our tour last year. We had our Public Safety Coordinating Council legislative update yesterday at the Capitol last night, and we had five representatives showed up, it was the best turnout. I actually made personal calls this time, we had five of them there, Representative Bowles, Representative Nerman, Neerman, Rick, Representative Lewis, Representative Post, and Leon, Representative.
Cherry Springer, was she there?
No, she was not, and no staff was there, they said staff would be there, but.
Alonso Leon.
Alonso Leon from Woodburn, so we had five representatives there.
Great.
And they were really appreciative of, of us, and, you know, we went through the summary, the, the bills, the, the three bills in each area. We had a really good turnout from our Public Safety Coordinating Council, Chief Ferraris from Woodburn was there, Chief Moore was there, Paige was there, I'm just going around the table thinking, Troy Clausen was there, Commander, Enforcement Commander.
Cast.
Cast was there, and then Kerry was there, Tamra was there. We had really good turnout from the Public Safety Coordinating Council and staff, and it was, it was, we got out of there a quarter to six or 10 to six, so it went really well. And Barb, obviously, there, HP was there, and, and so I thought that went, went well. It was probably, and HP said to me, because it was the best turnout that we've had ever from a representative standpoint, and we got compliments from them, saying they really appreciated us educating them on what was important in Marion County.
And they let awareness could help, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, so the process is, it's really hard getting to that point, but, but narrowing it down to those, that one sheet front and back, you know, it, it really made a difference. But there's a lot of bills over there that are going to be crazy, but, but at least they know we've got, come up with some priorities. So that was yesterday. God, yesterday was a long day. Busy.
It was, the morning was a lot too, yeah.
And then what did we have that work session on in the afternoon? What was that?
The fair.
Oh, yeah.
Marion County Fair.
Country, country western music.
Yes, it'll be good.
Country and western. All right. Okay. Anything else you want to talk about? All right, and we will adjourn.